Yeah, this is our bill study session for H R two, three, oh, seven, which is the carbon fee and dividend. Um, this is just a quick thing about CCL. I didn't know how many new people were going to be joining us. Um, um. Yeah, this is the text of. Believe that's the old link. Um, I'll have to update that with a new link. Um, so yeah, this is kind of how we divided up the bill, so. Um, I'm just going to handle the kind of beginning sections and then I decided that we would do the definitions. Um, just because there were some things in there that were. Um. Probably important for us to know. Um, and then also. Uh, yeah, so Lynn has a carbon fee and then Mary, I'll be covering those because she couldn't make it. Um, and then, yeah, Matt, you're right, Kate had the administrative authority.
Okay, that's a short one.
Hmm. Um, John has the carbon border fee adjustment. Um, and then Kurt, you have allocation of harbor carbon border fee adjustment revenues as well as treaties and international negotiations. Um, Charles had the carbon dividend trust fund, limited disclosure of information. Uh, Malik, you have the National Academy of Sciences review of carbon fee. Impacted carbon fee on biomass use and carbon sinks. And then that's, that's pretty much it. Um, the last few sections were just, just some kind of. Bill jargon. So, um. Um, so.
I think Annalise, do you have this list? That we could have a copy of because I tried to print it and it didn't go.
Uh, this list of the, the.
Yeah, the way it's broken down.
Um, I, it's in an email. I could email it to you afterwards if you.
Sure. No, it's just, I would like to have it because.
Okay.
Uh, I don't want to write everything down, but I'm taking notes.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can email that to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's probably easier than I know the website kind of. Um.
I got you Jenny, I got it. I found it in the email.
Thanks, thank you.
Yep.
So John just put in the chat, the, the new bill text. Um, if you want to kind of follow along.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, the first. In the bill, it says, under section two, it says kind of like findings, which is just, you know, pretty much why are we having this carbon fee and dividend? Um, and they, I think in the updated version, they changed it to a carbon dividend trust fund. Um, I don't remember if that was in the last one. Um. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, so it's, so they kind of call out a carbon, um. Um. Dividend trust fund for the American people to encourage market driven innovation of clean energy technologies and market efficiency efficiencies, which will reduce. Harmful pollution and creating more stable and prosperous America. Um, which we all know the carbon fee and dividend will do. Um, and then, yeah, some of the findings, um, are that efficient markets will strengthen our economy and benefit our nation by encouraging competition. Innovation and technological pro- progress. Um. Then these markets should reflect all costs of goods to ensure that they advance America's prosperity and national interests. Um. Emissions of carbon pollution and other harmful pollutants into our air impose substantial costs on all Americans and future generations. Um, there's a lot of health costs associated with that. Um, and then a creation of a carbon dividend trust fund to be distributed to the American people will make markets more efficient, create jobs and stimulate competition. Innovation and technological progress. Um, that will benefit us all. Um, and then so just going into the definitions. Um, when they say the administrator, that's the administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency. Um, the carbon dioxide equivalent. Um, these are kind of like really. Kind of sciencey terms, I guess, um, but the number of metric tons of CO2 emissions. With the same global warming potential as one metric ton of another greenhouse gas. Um. So. Yeah, it's kind of like what the equivalent there. Um, carbon intensive products, which would just mean any manufactured or agricultural product that is emissions intensive. Um. And that also includes iron, steel, steel mill products, aluminum, cement. Glass pulp, paper, chemicals, or industrial ceramics, which are all very carbon intensive to create. Um. And then carbon leakage is the increase of global greenhouse gas emissions, which are substantially due to relocation of greenhouse gas sources from the U S. Um. Then carbon costs, which are national or subnational government policy, which explicitly places a price on greenhouse gas pollution. And shall be limited to either a tax on greenhouse gases or a system of cabin trade. Um, and that's expressed as CO2E. Um, and then throughout the bill, they talk a lot about covered entities. Um, which are defined as crude oil, coal and natural gas. Um. So. That's, yeah, crude oil refineries, um, importers of petroleum or petroleum products. As, and the same goes for coal. Um. Entering pipeline. Uh, of natural gas. Um. And any importer of natural gas into the U S. Um, as. Well, as covered fuel, and I believe I had, yeah, definition for covered fuel too, so. Um, and then so covered fuel is. Kind of that same thing, crude oil, natural gas, coal, or any other product derived from those which shall be used. Uh, to emit greenhouse gases. Um, so basically the gas that you kind of put in your car. Um, I put a strike through, through fluorinated greenhouse gases because that's no longer in the new bill. Um, that was something that was, that had a fee on it. Um. Um. So, and then. I'm not sure. You know, actually how much we need to go into all of these definitions, but, um. If you need to refer back to them, they're here and they're also, you know, in the bill as well, so. Um, but those were kind of the most important ones. Um. The, but as we go more into the actual carbon fee. Um, so we, as we know, the carbon fuse imposed on any covered entities emitting use or sale or transfer for unemitting use or covered fuel. Um, the carbon fuse is an amount equal to the greenhouse gas content of the cover fuel multiplied by the carbon fee rate. And then the carbon fee rate. Um, is fifteen dollars. Um, and the carbon fee rate goes up every year by ten dollars, so. Um, I believe it's fifteen dollars per ton. Um, of. Covered of a covered entity. Um. And then. That pretty much what happens is if it doesn't, if our emissions reduction target doesn't get met, then. Um, we increase that amount that we're getting, getting, that we're taxing. Um. The covered entity. Um, and then inversely, if we exceed the expectations, then. We'll substitute, you know, the fifteen dollars by zero dollars, so that, um. You know, we're kind of just. Making a gradual, you know. Um, kind of. Uh, we're approaching the goal gradually, um, I guess, and not, you know, going. Too crazy with the taxes. I mean, if it's already doing what it's supposed to do, then. Um, like, let's not tax anymore, so. Um. So there is a, an inflation adjustment, which is. Um, basically if there is inflation that's happening. Um, whatever dollar amount that we, that the carbon fee is, it just gets multiplied by the. Cost of living adjustment for the calendar year, which is something that is totally. Um. Calculated in a different. Um, part of Congress. And then there is an accept exemption and refund. Um, I was trying to understand what exactly this meant, um, but I was not really. Successful in, in kind of understanding what. Um, so the secretary shall prescribe such rules as are necessary to ensure the fee. Imposed by the section is not imposed with respect to any non emitting use. Or any sale or transfer for a non emitting use, including rules providing for the refund of any carbon fee paid. Under the section with respect to any such use, sale or transfer, so. I don't know.
Annalise, I, I think I know what that's about.
Okay.
So, um, fossil fuels sometimes get used for non-fuel purposes. Uh, in particular, as we're all familiar, oil gets used as a lubricant and as a raw product for plastics. And a number of other things, nylon. Um, and since that's not getting emitted, right, they don't want to tax the fuel that's used for that. Well, it's taxed at the refinery. Which is better than the wellhead because it kind of avoids that, but sometimes things get kind of repurposed later, right? And they had some oil, is that going to be used as bunker oil in an engine or is that going to be used as a lubricant? And, and so I think that's what this is about.
Okay, gotcha. That would make sense, um, because it's not emitting, yeah, carbon in there. Right. Okay, and then there were some other exemptions, so the fee doesn't apply to agriculture. Um. Um, let's see. Or any type of, yeah, fuel that's used on a farm or for farming purpose or purposes. Um, so basically what happens is that the, the secretary will pay back. What was fee, what was taxed on. Um. On the farm. Um, see, and then the same thing goes with armed forces. Um. Um, and then this was actually Mary's section, so I'm going to stop sharing. Um, or actually, I'm just going to go back and just, um, ask if anybody has questions, I guess, about that. Beginning part.
I did have one, so it, all throughout the bill, it says the secretary shall have the power to. I'm guessing that's the secretary of the treasury, but I don't actually know. I couldn't find it anywhere.
Yeah, I believe that's what it was. Um, I know they say administrator and that's the only thing that.
The administrator is the administrator of the EPA, right? And there are certain powers granted to them, but it's unclear. They don't, I could not find any place where they state what secretary they're talking about.
Yeah, good question.
My section had Secretary of Energy.
Oh.
That would make sense.
Was that in the definitions?
No, it just said the Secretary of Energy has to talk to like National Academy of Sciences, so.
Oh, okay.
Infer it's the same reference.
Yeah. Huh, that's interesting that they didn't put it in the.
Yeah.
Definitions.
I didn't realize agriculture was an exemption. How did that? Uh, end up as an exemption?
Um, I, I believe I'm just kind of. Assuming that, um, they, they have it as an exemption because their agriculture and armed forces are kind of. What are like the important things in, in the U S? Um, and I also think, um, to make this a bipartisan bill, if those things are exempt, then. Um, it might be more easier to pass, um, I'm assuming. Um.
Well, they certainly have a lot of things that they can do to minimize that, and that's what I'm hoping they'll do. I think I'll ask Debbie Stabina.
Yeah, sure. Um, I, I, you know, and there is some concern, you know, sometimes. Where I've had people kind of question, well, why isn't agriculture? Yeah, taxed and I, I mean, it does. Kind of. It is a good question. Um.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not, I'm not too sure what the, the reasoning.
The Farm Lobby has a lot of votes. Farmers don't want to pay more for their fuel. Um, I did find that reference, it's section ninety-nine oh five, it says, the secretary, in consultation with the administrator and the Secretary of Energy. So that suggests that the secretary is not the Secretary of Energy because they're going to consult with the Secretary of Energy. So I'm, I'm still back and I think it's the Secretary of the Treasury because this whole thing is a tax system, right? Uh, you'd think they would say that somewhere.
Yeah, you would.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks for, for pointing it out. Okay, well, um, was there anybody else that had any questions?
I think I just wanted to point out a, a tiny little correction. I think I saw that, uh, you had it stated that the, um. Uh, first year would be twenty nineteen, and I think it's been updated to twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yeah, I think you're right. Yeah, that, that is an old. Version from the previous bill.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
So, um, Lynn, I think you're next with the carbon.
So can I share my screen?
Yeah, let's.
And this is the, I took the white text on here is from the section by section guide to bill from the hundred and seventeenth Congress from the CCL website. And so it says, um. Uh, establishes a carbon fee as follows, levies fee on certain covered fuels. And then, as you said, a fee is placed on an entity's emitting use, sale or transfer of a covered fuel. So that would be at the refinery for crude oil or on an importer of petroleum. At the mine for coal or at the coal importer. On the coal importer, where pipeline quality natural gas enters the natural gas transmission system in the U S. Or an importer of natural gas, we'll get that. Um, or on an entity that's using a covered fuel in a manner that emits greenhouse gases into the atmosphere that isn't covered by the above. Um, the above mentioned. So. That's just the details on where it's levied on those entities. And if anybody wants to jump in at any time and correct this, that would be absolutely fine with me. And then, as you said, it's calculated by, um, looking at the amount of greenhouse gases emitted times the amount of the carbon fee at that time. So which makes sense, what's emitted times the rate of the fee. So the specifics are, um, that it would be fifteen dollars per metric ton of CO2 equivalent, starting in twenty twenty-one. It would increase ten dollars per year and fifteen if the actual emissions of the prior year went above the emissions targets. And that would make it fifteen instead of ten for each ton. And then the fee stops increasing when the emissions reach ten percent of the levels in two, in twenty-ten. So that's our target is to get it below those levels, and at that point it would stay at. Whatever it is added up to the fifteen plus the ten plus the ten plus the ten, that would be the fee that it would. It wouldn't increase anymore at that point. Um, I thought it was interesting about that it is, um, adjusted for inflation. Because it would lose its power if they don't do that, it would become pretty weak. And they, uh, explained that it really needs to stay as strong as possible, especially as, uh, we get further along in the process. Um, let's see, exemption and refund of the fee for fuels not combusted, i.e. the, the oil used in plastics. And I was glad to hear from John, the other, um, uses. Because that's kind of interesting to me. And again, as you said, Annalisa, because that's not going out, you know, right now, we're really just looking at what's producing those greenhouse gases. Hmm. And the exemption for military and agriculture, um, fuels for military and farm are exempted, they get, it's getting, by getting a refund back. Um, it's those, uh, fuels that are. Uh, oh, yeah, and then there. It's does not cover things, other, um, greenhouse gases that come from other. Places on the farm, such as bovine methane, rice paddy methane, um, things like that. It's really just looking at the fuels in the equipment. Um. Right, so agriculture gets refunded, uh, military. Um, as you said, it's that fuel that goes in the vessels of war vehicles or electric power generation equipment. Is refunded. And that's pretty much that, all that fell under my little area about carbon fee. So if anyone can. Give any more input on that or has any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think I, I definitely did your section.
Well, no, I, I went back to the definitions a lot, you know, to try to understand what my section was about, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, um. I must have not changed that from the last, um. Uh. Assignment that I had, so, but that's so good that, that, you know, we had the additional definitions from you, so. But yeah, does anybody else have any questions about that?
No, I, I think it helped to clarify some of that. Uh. Because with the farm, you've got the animals and then you've got the machines, the mechanisms. And so they're addressing the energy part, not the animal part. But. Farmers need to be addressing the other part, and I don't know how they're going to get to do it, so maybe Debbie has an idea. As to that, that they may be talking about. That helps them to take better care of the environment.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I know that, you know, CCL really does say that this is not a be all, end all, you know, bill. It does have to be coupled with, you know, other things and, um. I mean, I think educating farmers on a lot of different, um. Methods like regenerative farming, um, different farming practices can really help, but. Yeah, um, so.
And there was one other thing on agriculture. Is anyone else speaking on the fertilizers? You know, the oil that goes into, goes into producing the fertilizer, I guess it's oil, but some kind of fuel is used in that case.
Mostly natural gas.
Okay, natural gas, and, and they said that if they, if they can get the carbon capture and sequestration to work. Then they would, that would reduce the cost, so the fertilizer cost isn't going up as much to the farmers. Because they're going to be getting that increased cost. That happens with the, which, you know, they should, if that's, if there's a lot going into the environment at that point in the process, so. Anyway, that's all. I just remembered that.
Oh, it's good to know, too. Um, and then, so the next section was Mary's section. Um, let's see, let's share again. Um, which was the decommissioning of the carbon fee. Um, so. It, the, there's a decommissioning of a program when emissions reach ten percent. Um, of twenty-ten level and when carbon dividends drop below twenty dollars. Per month for three consecutive years, so that's when it kind of ends. Um. Um, so the secretary determines. That actual emissions of greenhouse gases from covered fuels is not more than ten percent. Of the greenhouse gas emissions from covered fuels during the year twenty-ten. And the monthly carbon dividend payable to an adult eligible individual has been less than twenty, so it's. Yeah, that's a part of, that comes from the bill. Um. And then she also had the carbon capture and sequestration, um, which provides a refund of carbon fee paid. When qualified carbon dioxide is captured and sequestered in a safe and permanent manner. This requires establishment of sound criteria for safe and permanent sequestration, only CO2 from covered fuels and only rebate for amount likely. Um. To remain sequestered. Um. So, you know, that just incentivizes more, um, if companies want to sequester carbon. Um. Then they'll get, you know, a refund of their carbon fee, so.
There is another whole section, not of this bill, but of current tax law that provides companies with a, um, a tax credit for carbon sequestration. And, uh, that's created a lot of interest, um, in doing this. Um, particularly not so much for burning fuels, because that, that makes a mess, but, um. For ethanol, uh, manufacturing, uh, because fermentation makes a lot of CO2 and it's pure CO2 at room temperature, very easy to capture. And then also some of these chemical processes, um, like, um, fertilizer manufacturer ammonia specifically. Um, emits a lot of CO2 that would be relatively easy to capture, much, much easier than trying to catch it out of smoke stacks.
Hmm, yeah.
Actually, Annalisa, I have that section, nine-nine oh five.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I think, did you go over nine-nine oh three? Because I think that was Mary's other section. Decommissioning or emission reduction schedule?
Um, I do not. She must have, um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I got sent the wrong, wrong ones, um. I didn't have a chance to check because she sent me those just. Uh, right before the meeting, so, um.
Gotcha.
But if you want to go ahead and talk more about your section.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Um, but yeah, just to kind of elaborate just a little more on what Annalisa said, uh. Uh, section nine-nine oh five, uh, covers, it outlines the regulations of how facilities capture and sequester carbon dioxide. Uh, and how they'll receive carbon fee refund payments. Um, and for those who are unfamiliar with the term, sequestering is just like containing and stashing away. Um, in order to qualify, a facility must capture emitted qualified carbon dioxide from covered fuels. And either use it, such as in the production of substances, or sequester it in a safe and permanent manner. Um, how sequester, sequestration is to be safely and permanently handled is not specified. But it states that the Secretary of Energy, or maybe it's, no, I think this one's actually just the Secretary. Let me check on that one. Now, I'm, now I'm interested to make sure that those are separated. Uh. I think it's just the Secretary. Thanks for pointing that out, John, though. Um, the secretary and the EPA administrator will prescribe these regulations no more than, uh, five hundred and forty days after the enactment of this section. Uh, the refund payment amount is determined by the lesser of two amounts. Either it will be an amount equal to the adjusted metric tons of qualified carbon dioxide multiplied by the carbon fee rate of that year on the covered fuel. Or it will be the amount of carbon fee imposed with respect to the covered fuel, which I'm still a little unsure of how those are different.
How the covered fuel, I'm sorry.
How just those two, uh, amounts are different. One, it says it's the, you know, qualified carbon dioxide multiplied by the fee rate of that year. Or it will be the amount of the carbon fee imposed with respect to the covered fuel. And I'm not entirely sure what that difference is.
A lot of jargon.
Yeah.
There's also a paragraph four there, Matt, you got to talk about that?
Let me see, paragraph four.
Coordination with credit.
Oh. I don't know if, this might be new. You know, I may have missed this. Well, let me just read it out loud since I may have missed this. Uh, coordination with credit or carbon dioxide sequest, sequestration. At such time, the secretary prescribes regulations implemented in the section, no payment under this section shall be allowed to a taxpayer. To whom a credit has already, has been allowed for any taxable year under section forty-five Q.
Section forty-five Q is the tax code I was talking about that gives them a tax credit for sequestration. So, but I think this is just basically saying you can't double dip.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. I think I had that in my notes earlier and I must have deleted. That's a good thing to have, though, and I was looking around all over for that section forty-five Q, so thanks for putting it up.
It's an existing law, so.
Gotcha, I was like, what is that?
It's like, you know, having a 401K or a five-twenty-nine B, or, you know, it's, it's a section of the IRS code.
Understood. Thank you.
You've got a lot of knowledge, John. I'm glad.
Thank you. Um, and now I, I think Kate had the next section, right? Six or nine nine oh six?
Yeah, um, did anybody have questions about that previous?
Good point.
Section, um, before I go on.
Yeah, is it possible the previous one, like where it gave the two options for the credit, like? Maybe one of them is covering, like, if you sequester a certain amount in this year, you get like the rate of this year. Whereas the production, like maybe if the emissions were produced the previous year, it would be like a different.
That might, that might explain it. That might do it, yeah. Yeah, some of the language is a little confusing to me, at least. I'm sure it's, you know, familiar to anybody else who's used to reading this type of legislation.
Yeah, it's legalese.
Um, I actually had, from the previous time when we were going to do this, I covered, uh, this next section too. Uh, so if you would like me to just go over what I had written down, I'm assuming it hasn't changed much.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, I don't think so, because it's just talking about how it's gonna be administered.
Real short. Yeah, so, uh, nine nine oh six administrative authority. This section states the extent of rulemaking authority and guidance will be given to the Secretary and EPA Administrator to carry out this program. Regulations include identifying the most effective point of production, distribution or use of a covered fuel for collecting the carbon fee, identifying the entities that will be liable for paying the carbon fee requiring for monthly payments or requirements for monthly payments, excuse me. Establishing rules for distinguishing between different types of covered fuels, ensuring that no covered fuels have duplicate fees and ensuring the implementation of the carbon border fee adjustment.
Okay, so basically just how it's going to be. You know, implemented.
Oh, Mary's coming in.
Awesome, um. Okay, so then the next section, John, um, which is the carbon border fee adjustment, so. Um, if you wanna go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, how, uh, let's see, how do I share this here? Share screen. One participant can share at a time. Well, okay. All right, so I'm gonna talk about the carbon border fee adjustment, which, um, everyone else in the world calls the border carbon adjustment, but anyway, I'm gonna go with CBFA. So what is it? What is its purpose? How would it work? What benefits does it provide? That's important. Biden's election platform supports it. That was an interesting find. And then what are other countries doing? Because this interacts with the carbon laws of other countries. So first of all, the carbon border fee adjustment is defined in chapter one oh two, sections ninety, nine, nine oh eight, nine and eleven. It does four things. It creates a fee on imports of fuels minus their foreign carbon cost, and I'll define that in a minute. It, uh, has a fee on imports of carbon intensive products minus the foreign carbon cost. It refunds the fee on exports of fuels and refunds the fee on the export of carbon intensive products. So I've got a little table there that shows where those fees are defined in which sections. And then carbon intensive products, and I think we saw this in, in, uh, Annalisa's definition sections. Uh, agro cult agricultural products as specified. So that's kind of a future TBD. Iron steel, steel mill products, aluminum, cement, glass, pulp, paper, chemicals, or industrial ceramics. And then it empowers the Secretary to define others. Um, so first of all, it's a pretty good list and it's a bigger list than, uh, the EU's, um, carbon controls, uh, hit right now. Uh, those are all very energy intensive, uh, products. Um, and, uh, I think the idea is that as the fee goes up, it then becomes practical to apply it to, to more and more things that maybe are not as carbon intensive. For the foreign cost of carbon or foreign carbon cost, right, is defined in the law. It's the explicit price a foreign jurisdiction places on the emission of greenhouse gas pollution through law or regulation. And what I find interesting is that it says foreign jurisdictions. It's not necessarily countries. Uh, it, it could be a province or a state or a, a city even, right? Um, which could get tricky, because if you're exporting to a particular city, can they then export it back again? I, I don't know. Anyway.
So it's basically directly where, wherever the product is coming from.
Yeah, so like I said, that, that, that could get tricky because what, what's keep us from exporting it to a jurisdiction that has a carbon tax, but they turn around and hand it to the city next to them that doesn't, you know, if it's not a nation.
That's a concern. I forget where I saw that, but that is a concern for some, some.
Probably China. China has a bunch of, uh, carbon taxes at, in individual city or province level and, and nothing national, so that would be weird. Well, what is the purpose of this? It defines it. It says the purpose, uh, is to protect animal, plant, human life and health, conserve exhaustable natural resources. That's kind of like motherhood and apple pie. By preventing carbon leakage, which I'm going to define, and facilitate the creation of international agreements. Now, that's what makes this section so unique is it's not just about the net domestic policy. This is about foreign policy. So carbon leakage occurs when attempts at, uh, reducing carbon emissions in one country uh, with a strict policy increase emissions in another country. Why would that happen? Well, the clean country loses jobs and incomes and the dirty industry moves their facilities to the other country, right? This defeats the whole purpose. All right, we're trying to reduce carbon emissions, moving them from one country to another does not achieve the purpose. Um, Europe has a cap and trade system and they believe they're already losing production to other countries and key industries because of this. So this is this little, uh, graph here. This was a survey, uh, of industry people who are making decisions about, you know, where to do things. And interestingly, this is from back in twenty sixteen. And the question was, you know, do, how much do you consider, um, the, the carbon taxes uh, in picking the location of things? And so green is no importance, right? Blue is, is part of their calculations. They consider that light blue is decisive factor. So you, you look at oil and gas, uh, industry and metals and, and power and heat. I mean, this becomes the decisive factor in where they're gonna locate, right? So they don't wanna create incentive for, uh, say Russia to build a bunch of power plants and sell them the electricity and all their power plants shut down, that, that doesn't do anybody any good. Everybody follow that?
To a degree. Yeah, that makes sense.
So how would this work? Well, it would be implemented within two years of enactment. And the Secretary, again, I'm not quite sure, I think Treasury, uh, is granted a lot of powers here, right? They determine the amount of the fee an imported product would have paid if produced domestically. That can be a tricky calculation. You know, here's a ton of steel. Well, how much carbon did it take to make the steel? Well, we're not gonna study how it was made in that country. We're gonna say, well, if it was made here, it would have been taxed by the, produce this much carbon and been taxed this amount. Um, then we have to determine the amount of the foreign carbon cost to subtract from that. Right? So they may have their own carbon tax. They might have a cap and trade system. Back in definitions, we saw foreign carbon costs can be either one of those things, but not other administrative ways of, uh, increasing the cost. Um, and you have to then, you know, figure that out and, and take the difference. Um, the Secretary is empowered to collaborate with other jurisdictions, including subnational governments. So that, that was interesting that they explicitly called that out, right? That we might be negotiating with Western Australia. Right? Instead of all of Australia, which is just an example. Um, the Secretary can alter any portion of the carbon, uh, border fee adjustment that the World Trade Organization finds violates a treaty obligation. And it whole, had a whole section about how they can change just that one little part of the law. We don't have to throw away the whole law, right? It's, it's severable. Um, and then suspend the, the adjustment for countries whose policies will reduce greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by twenty fifty. So if they've got a really aggressive program, we just say, hey, you get it, that's it. We're, we're not, we're not gonna, um, tax you at all. So what are the benefits of this? Why are we doing this? Well, first of all, fuels and carbon intensive products that are imported from non-taxing countries don't gain a pricing advantage, right? We don't wanna tax domestic production and not foreign production. And then the foreigners have, uh, a um, advantage in producing that. And, you know, that's what would hurt the economy, right? This is protecting the American economy, protecting American jobs and basically invalidating half of everything conservative Republicans say about it. Um, a- and then they'll, they'll talk about, you know, a carbon tax would destroy our economy all the time, right? Well, that's why this is in here, right? To negate that, to prevent that from happening. There is no incentive to move carbon intensive production to non-taxing countries, right? So you don't get out of our tax by moving your factory, uh, over to some other country. This prevents economic and job losses and it prevents the carbon leakage, right? We don't end up with the same amount of carbon being released in the atmosphere just from a different place. Or fuels and carbon intensive products we export do not suffer a price disadvantage. So we don't get in a situation where suddenly, uh, you know, natural gas from the US, if we put it on uh, liquefied natural gas tankers and ship it to Japan, it's more expensive than gas that came from Singapore because they don't have a carbon tax, right? So we, a- again, it's, it's a leveling of the playing field, right? It evens things up so that our industries, uh, don't suffer a disadvantage because of this policy. Now, here's one that I haven't seen anywhere, right? But I think it's interesting. The US government will gain tax revenue from non-taxing countries that export to us, right? They don't have a carbon tax. They export to us. We impose the fee. That goes into the trust fund, which then gets distributed to you and me. So I think it would be great if, uh, you know, steel manufacturers in China that are exporting to us, uh, were helping, you know, uh, enlarge the check that I get every month. I like that idea. And then finally, it, and I think this is the most important thing. It creates an incentive or, or perhaps the less obvious, it creates an incentive for non-taxing countries to impose their own carbon tax. Um, you know, we, we're discussing taxing carbon. Europe's already doing it. Canada's already doing it. I think this would create a tremendous, um, amount of pressure on China, right? That, that their exports are then being taxed by these foreign countries and they're left with a choice. They can pay us the tax or they can tax it themselves and keep the money in their country. Kind of an easy choice at that point. So to illustrate this, right, imagine that we have a carbon fee that works out to twenty cents on a gallon of gasoline, and I just made up that number. Um, so US gasoline prices will go up twenty cents. Now, if Colombia doesn't have a carbon tax, then gasoline would be cheaper there, right? They're, they're not paying that tax. And therefore gasoline imported from Colombia would pay the tax to the US when that gasoline crosses the border, right? When it comes into the harbor. If we didn't do this, imported gasoline from Colombia would be cheaper than domestic gasoline. So this mechanism is protecting US companies from an unfair, unfair trade advantage that would otherwise occur. And in addition to fuels, I mean, this keeps imported products like steel, cement, and glass from gaining an unfair advantage. Uh, this is not protectionism, right? It sounds, sort of sounds like, well, you're, you're, you know, hitting a tariff on imported goods. But it's not protectionism. This is laying, leveling the playing field and, and making it fair so that, uh, other countries can't game the system by, um, not taxing carbon. Uh, on exports without the, uh, the border adjustment, US exporters of fuels, carbon intensive products would have an unfair competitive disadvantage. Uh, our products pricing would have the carbon fee in them and other countries would not. And therefore we refund the carbon fee, um, on exported products. Now, at first I thought, well, wait a minute, uh, th- this is a loophole, right? This is a way you can produce carbon products and not, uh, pay a tax. Well, if the other country doesn't tax it, then yes. If the other country is taxing it, then we're refunding the fee and then they're hitting it with their fee, right? So, um, it's just sort of jurisdictional. The fee's gonna get applied wherever, uh, it's getting consumed rather than where it's getting produced. That makes sense, right? We wanna penalize the actual, uh, burning of the fuel, not necessarily the, the extraction of it from the ground. And the US, uh, will have a revenue gain, right? If we tax carbon, other countries that export to us do not, then we gain the revenue and that goes into our monthly dividend checks. Finally, it creates this incentive for other company, uh, countries to impose a carbon tax, right? They would much rather collect their own tax than pay the tax into, uh, the, the US Treasury. And that's the only way to avoid it, right? If you're gonna sell us stuff, we're gonna tax you unless you tax yourself. I, I think this is huge, right? It's a huge incentive and, and we could get a kind of snowball effect here. Wow, what a segue to my next slide. I didn't even do that on purpose. So this is a quote from a, uh, white paper by the Climate Leadership Council that says a border carbon adjustment could trigger a positive feedback loop whereby an increasing number of countries join the club of jurisdictions taxing carbon, right? If your country does a lot of exporting, this sort of forces you to impose a carbon tax. Now, this was something I didn't know, and I, I found this just in doing research. Biden's platform that he ran on, the Biden Harris Made in America platform, and it's still on the web, um, specifically calls for a border adjustment. It says that they will apply a carbon border fee against countries that are failing to meet their climate and environmental obligations to make sure they are forced to internalize the environmental costs they're now imposing on the rest of the world. This adjustment stops polluting countries from undermining our workers and manufacturers, ensuring we can lead, compete, and win as we harness the opportunity of clean energy economy, achieving net zero emissions by twenty fifty. This was part of the platform they ran on that got them elected. I, I, I think we should make a, a big deal of that. Uh, we heard, um, so, uh, Congressman Levin say that he really thought that the Democrats in Congress would just follow the lead of whatever the administration came out with. And they have not yet, um, proposed a carbon tax. And yet here it is in their platform. They're talking about a border fee adjustment, which only makes sense if you have a carbon tax. Um, so I, I think we ought to hold their feet to the fire and say, hey, you ran on this. Are you, are you changing your mind? You know, is this a flip? Is this like a read my lips, breaking of your promise?
I agree.
So what are other countries doing? Well, in Canada, it started with a carbon tax in British Columbia in two thousand and eight. And now they have a law that every province must steve or either have their own carbon tax or they get the federal tax, right? So they're, yeah, sort of like us, they're the big believers in states' rights, only it's province rights. And so it's like you can design your own or by default you get the federal one, right? The rate in twenty twenty was thirty dollars a ton and it increases fifteen dollars a ton each year after twenty twenty two. So it's a, you know, it's a substantial carbon tax already in place in Canada. They distributed their funds in quarterly payments to the population, out of like what we're proposing. Um, now they're a parliamentary system. So the, uh, Prime Minister and the majority of Parliament are from the same party. That's the Liberal Party. And at their fall economic update, they announced they're considering a border carbon adjustment to prevent carbon leakage, right? Um, and then there was this quote from a white paper I found that's great. It says, if you take the Kyoto and Paris accounting systems, so they're illogical conclusions, you can have zero emissions if you just have zero production. The Canadians still pay money. Carbon's taxes pay for, uh, costs resulting from Canadian fuel standards to reduce local emissions. But the result is an increase in global emissions. However, if we reverse carbon leakage by producing more of the stuff than, that we can in an environmentally responsible manner than the rest of the planet, you know, this, we're really gonna get a double dividend, right? Canadian jobs and less global emissions. So, I mean, this is the, just the same idea, right? Uh, expressed by another party. But it's in Canada and it's all about Canada. The difference is, Canada already has a carbon tax. We're talking about a border adjustment on a tax we don't even have yet. European Union, they already have, it's not a carbon tax. They have a, uh, cap and trade regulations and they're actually kind of complicated. Great article from the Wall Street Journal, uh, a few weeks ago titled, Europe's Carbon Border Tax Plan looms over government, over global trade, right? So this is, you know, speaking from a Wall Street perspective that they're worried about this, right? Europe is preparing legislation that would jolt the rules of international trade by taxing imported goods based on the greenhouse gases emitted to make them. I- i- it's exactly like the thing we're talking about, right? Except it's Europe and that's twenty seven nations altogether. That's a lot of, um, trade that would be affected. At first, the rules would apply to four heavily polluting industries, you know, in addition to fuels, right? Steel, aluminum, cement, and fertilizer. So you remember, our list was a little longer, right? And they said other industries will be included over time. And they're saying that this would start as early as 2023 and be in full force in 2025. So this is not our grandchildren's problem, right? This is coming, this is coming soon. So recently, the, the price of the emissions permits in Europe has soared. So they were around 30 euros a metric ton, now they're 50 euros a metric ton. That's 56 bucks. So they're, they're well ahead of the Canada tax, and of course, way above our tax of zero.
Yeah.
So this is from the European Parliament website, and I sent you all the PowerPoints so you could get the links, right? If you're interested. Parliament is discussing a carbon levy on imported goods to stop companies moving outside the EU to avoid emission standards, a practice known as carbon leakage. By 2023, the carbon border adjustment mechanism should cover power and energy intensive industrial sectors, which represent 94% of the EU's industrial emissions. That's, that's pretty broad, right?
Yeah.
So Europe has said they're going to do this, they have a schedule, they just haven't worked out all the details yet. Canada is now discussing doing this, and it just makes so much sense. Once you have a carbon tax, it's like, my goodness, why wouldn't you do this? So how important are what they are doing to us? Well, this is a chart of the US largest export markets, right? So we export, I'm afraid I don't know the figures here. It can't be millions of dollars, so, you know, billions of dollars or trillions. Probably 1.5 trillion, anyway. Of that, 37% is the European Union and Canada. They are the two largest markets for US exports. China's our largest market where we import from them, right? But our two largest export markets are the European Union and Canada, and they're both about to impose these taxes on the goods that we're exporting to them. So in conclusion, the border carbon fee adjustment would protect US industries from underpriced imports from countries without carbon fees. It would prevent US exports from an unfair added cost not borne by other countries. It would provide a powerful incentive for other countries to initiate a carbon fee. Now, Canada and the EU, the two largest markets for US exports, will likely be imposing a border carbon adjustment on exports from the US soon. This creates a strong incentive for the US to pass HR 2307. Even conservative Republicans would not like the US companies to start paying carbon taxes to other countries.
Right.
I think this is a huge opening for CCL, right? Right now, all of our co-sponsors are Democrats, right? And the Republican line is, this will destroy the economy, even though the border adjustment would prevent that. But now we've got a whole new argument, right? They stole that off and repeated it. But now here's the new paragraph. Hey, guys, if we don't do it, we're paying taxes to Europe.
Mnuchin would like this. He could get some Republicans.
We've got to get some Republicans, right? This is not gonna become law without some Republican support, right? Now, we have zero.
Has already been trying, so this would be perfect for him.
I'm wondering, John, some of the other bills that do have the, I always get the carbon border adjustment, the terms wrong, but that are, are they the same as, as the one that's in this bill? Do you know?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
Well, that was a great presentation. Thanks, John.
Very thorough, helped me understand it a lot.
John, wouldn't the principles of the border adjustment in this bill be similar to what's being done in other legislation? I mean, the concept is sort of the same.
I just don't know, right? I don't want to, you know, express a guess because I don't know. I now know what Canada's thinking about. I know what Europe is actually proposing. But I don't know about the other US bills or really what's happening in any other countries.
I was just wondering about the one that's just been introduced in the Senate. We should probably take a look.
Right. That'd be very worthwhile to know, but I didn't get there.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if, if you saw anything about the Biden administration saying anything about, after he got elected, about the order adjustment at all?
Well, John Kerry has. But, you know, I, I think this is really gonna be directed by Secretary Granholm. Is probably gonna have more influence than anybody in the administration on how, what their proposals are gonna be for climate. And she has not endorsed this yet, so. Unless somebody knows better, right? I certainly haven't followed her every word, but I don't think so. And I think that's, that's a terrible shame. Especially after Levin told us that, you know, the congressional Democrats are gonna pretty much follow the administration's lead. So I think at CCL, we need to start, you know, pushing on the administration some.
Yes.
Because it sounds like they're the leaders of where we're gonna end up.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Okay, well, great. Were there any other questions for John?
Yeah, so a question on Europe. You said, I think Europe had some like carbon leakage where like industries were kind of low apprehensive to invest in Europe. So is, do you know if like the cap and trade was to address that issue? Or was that just within each country and then they need a border adjustment to?
Yeah, no, they can't, they don't have a border adjustment yet. And so the cap and trade is imposing a cost, which is leading some industries to develop elsewhere. Clearly, the oil and gas industries, right? They're doing less development of the North Sea, for example, than they used to. You see the Nord Stream 2 natural gas, huge natural gas pipeline coming into Germany from Russia. But it's gonna bring in Russian gas, which isn't subject to a carbon tax, right?
Okay, so they need a border adjustment to level that up.
Russia is particularly worried about the European action, by the way. They do a lot of very carbon intensive export to Europe.
Okay, and one more question. So I know in this bill, you mentioned if like the US is trying to impose the taxes on like stuff in China that's coming in, it would be like a US estimate of the emissions produced?
No, so that was what was interesting to me, is we don't try and estimate what the emissions were in China. We say, if this same product was produced here, here's how much carbon it would emit and how much tax we would impose, right? So it's kind of interesting. So you can't say, well, all of the electricity in our country is green, therefore this product that has a lot of electricity in it, like aluminum, you know, actually didn't emit any carbon. We say, hey, we don't care. If we made it here, it'd be dirty, therefore we're gonna tax it. A little bit weird, but from an administrative, it's a little bit unfair. But from an administrative perspective, I, it'd be, we don't want to have the job of trying to figure out carbon emissions in each country, right?
Yeah, I just didn't know if like, if we're like producing things in the United States, there's like a lot higher standards of emissions and pollutants, things like that, where we're using that to estimate versus like China, if they're not really regulating their emissions as much, then maybe like, I guess, I mean, it's probably just the best way to estimate it, but might not be perfect.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not. But it's, it's a lot easier than trying to do it the other way that might be more fair.
Yeah, I think I understand what this is trying to do in that respect. So like if a steel manufacturer in China, you know, figures out how to make, you know, CO2 free steel, you know, China is then incentivized to kind of do the same thing that we're doing with the exporting refund. So, you know, we'd end up taxing that as a carbon intensive product. So it would be up to the host country or the manufacturing country of that product to reimburse them for that.
Well, or they can impose their own carbon tax and say, well, your steel released no carbon, so the tax is zero, and we'd say, huh, I'm not sure, right? Foreign cost of carbon? Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I mean, there's, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of things are gonna go to court, you know, when this happens.
It seems like it would potentially get messy.
We've got a bunch of companies in the US now that are pledging to be 100%, you know, carbon free, right? They're, they're, you know, buying renewable energy to run there or whatever, and well, but they'll still get hit with the, for example, EU carbon border adjustment when they export. And they can say, well, but we emitted nothing making this product. Yeah, we don't care.
Okay, well, if there aren't any other questions, and this was a great discussion, I think. It's really informative. Um, so the next section is Kurt, you have the next two. Um, allocation of carbon border fee adjustment revenues as well as treaties and international negotiations. So if you'd like to go ahead?
Sure. So sorry, my camera is not working here. Can you give me rights to share, please?
Yeah, hold on.
Awesome. All right, so I'm on my, I'm on my mobile setup, so hopefully this works. Just yell at me if it doesn't. So I should be sharing two screens right now. One is the bill itself on the left, and on the right are my notes summarizing this and just my general thoughts around it. So the first section, 9910, is the allocation of carbon border fee adjustment revenues. So this is really simple. They, there's two branches, and I didn't want to interrupt you, John, but none of these fees are actually going into the American Trust Fund and going through dividends.
I assumed, so thanks.
Yeah, yeah. And this might be a sticking point, so it's, it's worth putting in more research and thinking about it more. But the, the two branches are just towards the administration of, of these carbon border adjustment fees. The US Customs and Border Protection is tasked with doing that. And then all other extra funds are to be sent to the Green Climate Fund, created by decision, you know, blah, 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 of the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change held in, yeah, Durban. I actually had to look this up. I wasn't sure what this was. So this Green Climate Fund was created by the, this United Nations Framework. And the main goal behind this was to provide funds, financial instruments, resources to developing countries for them to implement carbon reducing technologies and, you know, ultimately reduce carbon emissions. So this is, yeah, this is, I think, a lot larger than this one, you know, sentence says on here. So I had to, I did a little bit more research into what GCF is. So this is an completely independent organization, you know, independent of any country or power. And all their decision-making and implementation is tasked by their board. So this board is selected by regional and state authorities who are somewhat linked and accountable to the Conference of Parties present in the United Nations Framework Convention. This board consists of 24 members. Half of the members are to be from developed countries. And then, you know, essentially the people who are providing this money, and half are to be members of undeveloped countries who will receive it. So I think there's a good 50/50 split between, you know, how those funds are to be used and then, you know, who is requesting those funds. So the GCF is also tasked with tracking the progress of, of these projects. So once they grant a country or an organization money in a developing country, they're also tasked with auditing that project and tracking its progress. I didn't really go into the, you know, legal aspect of this for, you know, what would happen if a project, for example, laundered money. I believe GCF also has its own independent legal organization. But again, being international, I don't know who would really, you know, enforce what. So I don't know how much teeth there really is to this. But I think since GCF's holding the money, I think they have quite a bit of power.
Are you referring to the, the funds that are collected from the importing? Is that what goes into this fund?
Correct, yep.
Okay, just to be clear, thank you.
I had misspoke and said we were gonna get those in our dividend checks, but I stand corrected. We will not.
Yeah, I think this is the main instrument that the government is going to use to, when they say they're going to help developing countries reduce their carbon emissions, this is how that's gonna happen. And it kind of seems like a really large amount of money to do that. But, you know, maybe it calls for it. I'm, I'm not really sure. I know developing countries are developing very quickly, you know, such as, you know, Africa, India. Not so much South America, but, you know, there's a lot of people in, in these countries. And right now, their energy systems are very dirty. I think a lot of them are still using coal for even cooking. So, you know, they, and I think they, since they have not as much production of these green technologies in their own countries, they have to import it. You know, I think it could be a win-win. You know, these countries will get money to, to buy these technologies, like solar panels, wind turbines, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, ultimately, those are made in developed countries mostly. So the money's just coming right back to support jobs.
That's great. I think this is a good, also a good part of the bill because I think a lot of the time, when we talk about a carbon fee being imposed in the United States, well, some people say, well, what about other countries that are, you know, making way more emissions than we are? And I feel like this kind of addresses that problem a little bit, so.
Yep.
Sorry, I just was getting my input on that.
Yeah, totally right. I thought it's, it's a really beautiful part of the bill. So treaties and negotiations brings in another secretary into this equation. So if the World Trade Organization finds that any part of this Deutsch bill does not conform with international law, the Secretary of State has the power to modify the bill as needed. So I thought that was interesting. I don't really know the mechanisms of how that would happen and if it needs to be ratified by anyone after, or if the secretary just has complete authority to change it as he sees fit. The Secretary of State also is urged to complete negotiations with other countries, doing almost whatever is necessary to meet the goal defined in this bill of, and this was explicitly defined as reducing carbon emissions to zero by year 2050. So that's the Secretary of State's mandate. A big loophole I might have found in here, and maybe I just don't understand the legal implications of it, but it says the Secretary of State can suspend the carbon border adjustment fee to any countries that are on track to implement greenhouse gas mitigation policies sufficient to contribute to a global net reduction of greenhouse gas emissions to zero by 2050. And this, any suspension has to be reviewed at least every five years. So I think you can see that five years is longer than a presidential term. So I thought this was really interesting that, you know, just a country having a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to zero is enough for the Secretary of State to suspend the adjustment fees to that country. So, you know, I think this could possibly be used as a political tool or corrupt means if, you know, a country can just submit a plan to the Secretary of State. If it's the Secretary of State's incentive because they want something else in this country, completely irrelevant to this greenhouse gas emissions, you know, they might use it as a political tool to provide leverage to that country. Um, you know, they might use it as a political tool to provide leverage to that country, um, or kind of a quid pro quo. So uh, I think that's just something to watch out for.
This is really interesting. Wow.
Yeah.
Did seem good insight on this, well.
Yeah, I wonder what, what exactly, I mean, you know, what would they consider, I guess? I don't know. Well, that's great. Um, was this, that was the end of your, your sections, I think?
Yep, yep, the two sections, yep.
Okay, great. Does anybody uh, have any questions for Kurt?
It's beyond me at this point.
That was great, though.
Yeah.
Thank you for all that work.
Yeah.
Kurt, are you gonna share your notes? I thought they're kind of interesting. Is that possible?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Awesome. Alright, um, so next was uh, Charles's two sections, um. Let me scroll down to those, let's see here.
He missed the train.
He did, yeah. Um, so he had carbon dividend trust fund and uh, limited disclosure of information. Um, was there anybody who had knowledge of these things before, I guess, started reading these? Okay. Um, yeah, I'm just gonna read them. Um, I'm not gonna necessarily share my screen here, cause I think you all have the link to the bill. Um, so establishment and funding, there is uh, hereby established in the Treasury of the United States, a trust fund to be known as the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund, consisting of such amounts as may be appropriated to such trust fund as provided for in the section. Transfers to the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund. There is hereby appropriated to the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund amounts equal to the fees received into the Treasury less any amounts refunded or paid under section nine-nine-oh-two or nine-nine-oh-five. Um, expenditures, amounts in the trust fund shall be available for the following purposes. Administrative expenses, so much of the expenses necessary to administer the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund each year as does not exceed, in the case of the first five calendar years ending after the date of the enactment of the section, the administrative expenses for any year may not exceed eight percent of amounts appropriated to the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund during each year. And in the case of any calendar year thereafter, two percent of the five-year rolling average of the amounts appropriated to the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund. Um, okay, so I think it's pretty much saying that there will be administrative expenses that are taken out of this trust fund. Um, and in A, it says the case of first five calendar years ending.
It's like it's gonna be more expensive the first, or less efficiently handled the first five years or so. And then I think over time they'll probably get better at handling the administration, maybe.
Getting the bugs out.
Yeah. Getting it, getting it implemented, right?
Yeah.
The fees could be smaller in the beginning, so you won't get as much tax revenue.
Yeah, sure. Hmm, gosh. Um, alright, and then other administrative expenses, um. So much of the expenses are, as are necessary to administer chapter one-oh-one, and I'm not even sure what chapter one-oh-one is. Does anybody know what that means? For any year as does not exceed point-six percent of the amounts appropriated to the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund for the previous year and further limited as follows. Uh, the Department of Treasury, Social Security Administration, EPA, and Department of State. So expenses, um, so those four agencies, it seems like, can might also be working, and so those expenses might be given to them, so. I think that's what I got out of that. Um, carbon dividend payments in general from the amounts in the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund made available under paragraphs one and two of the subsection, uh, the Secretary shall, for each month beginning no more than two-hundred-seventy days after the date of the enactment of the uh, Energy Innovation Act, make carbon dividend payments to each eligible individual. Um, okay, so I think that basically says that the payments need to start rolling out no later than two-hundred-seventy days. Um, pro rata share, a carbon dividend payment is one pro rata share for each adult and half pro rata share for each child uh, under nineteen years old of amounts available for the month of the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund. So that's basically, yep. One share for each adults and a half for each child. Um, eligible individuals, the term eligible individual means with respect to any month, any natural living person who has a valid social security number or taxpayer identification number and is a citizen or lawful resident of the United States. Um, the Secretary is authorized to verify an individual's eligibility to receive a carbon dividend payment. Uh, fee treatment of payments, amount paid under the subsection shall be in- includeable in gross income. Okay, so you can add it into your gross income and then.
Now, the next paragraph kind of excludes that for individuals. So I, I think that that's talking about essentially corporations, but I'm not, not quite clear on it. Read the next paragraph, which kind of says the opposite.
Okay, uh, federal programs and federal assisted programs. The carbon dividend amount received by any individual shall not be taken into account as income and shall not be taken into account as resources for purposes of determining the eligibility of such individual or any other individual for benefits or assistance or the amount or extent of benefits or assistance under any federal program or any state or local program financed and whole and part with federal funds. Okay.
Programs like the ACA or food stamps or whatever, your eligibility is based on your resources, which is sort of your income, but it includes some other things or whatever. So it's saying it's not income, which means it's not taxable and it wouldn't exclude you from getting any benefits that you would otherwise get, right? So that's sort of backwards from the previous paragraph that says it's includeable in gross income. I can only therefore think that means corporations, which are, you know, people under the law, but not individuals.
Right, so.
Yeah, they're people like.
That's why you see the phrase natural person, right? That's a real person, not a corporation person.
I see, okay. That's interesting.
What a dumb thing.
Okay, well, yeah, thanks for clarifying that. Um, advanced payment, the Secretary shall transfer to the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund such amounts as are necessary for the dis- dispersment of an advanced carbon dividend to all eligible individuals as follows. Uh, an advanced carbon dividend shall be the same as the anticipated first carbon dividend required to be distributed under some paragraph and shall be distributed the month prior to the first collection of the carbon fee. Total amounts dispersed as advanced carbon dividends shall be deducted from the carbon dividends on a pro rata basis over the first three years after the dis- dispersment of the first carbon dividends.
Want me to summarize that?
Sure, yes, thank you.
So, so that says we get our first dividend check a month before we actually start paying the tax on our goods. Um, but then they make up for that over the next three years. They sort of deduct that advance that we got from the uh, checks that we get over the, the next three years so that it balances out.
So.
Why would they do that?
Yeah, usually they, they wait, it's, it's a delay.
Right, right. So I think the argument here is we don't want to hurt poor people and suddenly the price of everything goes up and they don't have their check yet. And we're saying, oh, it all evens out. They're like, yeah, but not this month, I'm broke, you know?
Yeah.
I can't pay my mortgage or I can't pay my rent, you know? So I, I think that's the purpose of that.
Okay.
Okay, great.
There is some logic to it.
It's not even really poor people, it's cash poor people, right? People who don't have enough money in the bank to, to cover the, the increased prices of things in the first month.
Like the gas that shot up.
Yep.
Okay, let's see, there is a a few more things here. So um, administrative authority, the Secretary shall promulgate rules, guidance, and regulations useful and necessary to implement the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund. Um, assignment of benefits, the right of any person to any future payment under this chapter shall not be transferable or assignable at law or in equity. And none of the monies paid or payable rights existing under subsection C-three shall be subject to execution, levy, attachment, garnishment, or other legal process, or to the operation of any bankruptcy or insolvent law.
Yeah, this is really important. So the first half of that says you can't sign away your future right to these checks. Right? So you can't, for instance, go to a loan place and get a loan and, and they're gonna then take the money out of your future dividend checks, right? Uh, I mean, you can agree that you'll do that, but they can't grab them and seize them, right? They, they don't have that power, and that goes with the rest of it. It's not subject to attachment or garnishment, right? If you're not paying something else, um, they, they can't grab it. So like, if you're divorced and you're not making your child support payments, they can garnish your wages. They can't garnish your divi- dividend check.
Mm-hmm, gosh. Alright, and then the next one, clerical amendment. Um, the table sec- sections for subsection A, chapter ninety-eight of such code is amended by adding at the end the following new item. And then this next section was also Charles, uh, limited disclosure of information. Um, the IR, Internal Revenue Code of nineteen-eighty-six is amended by adding at the end of the following new paragraphs, limited disclosure of identity information relating to carbon dividend payments. Uh, Department of Treasury, individual identity information shall, without written request, be open to inspection by or disclosed to officers and employees of the Department of Treasury whose official duties require such inspection or disclosure for purposes of administrate, administering section nine-five-twelve relating the Carbon Dividend Trust Fund. Okay. Um, Commissioner of Social Security, the Commissioner of Social Security shall, on written request, disclose to officers and employees of the Department of Treasury individual identity information which has been disclosed to the Social Security Administration as is necessary to administer section nine-five-twelve. Um, Commissioner of Social Sec- or I'm sorry, restriction on disclosure. Information disclosed under this paragraph shall be disclosed only for purposes of and to the extent necessary in carrying out section nine-five-twelve. So it sounds like this all says that your information um, is pretty much going to just be used for um, you know, allocating funds. Um, between the Social Security Administration, the Department of Treasury. Um, and that's it, so. Okay, um, does anybody have any questions or concerns or any discussion for those two parts?
I was, can we go back to that part that we were, had, we had the first discussion on as far as, um, what is it? It's nine-five-one-two-C, let's see, C-three, where, after the pro rata adult section.
So the eligible individual?
The D and the E in there. I know we went over it, but I'm really slow. Um, fee treatment of payments and federal programs and federal assisted programs. So the way I took it was that the, the dividend counts as gross income, but it's just that it's not gonna be counted for eligibility for the federal programs. That's the way I understood it. I don't understand the part about corporations.
Well, so the one statement says it's includeable in gross income.
Right.
But then in the next paragraph, it says it is not part of income.
I thought that was just for calculating the eligibility. Isn't that what it means?
Well, it's a good question.
Uh, into account as resources for purposes of determining the eligibility of individuals for.
You might be right. You might be right. So I mean, that, that's a great question. Uh, is this, is your dividend check taxable income?
I think it is.
And I was reading it, no, but it sounds like maybe you're right. Maybe I misread that. The one paragraph says it is includeable, maybe that's everybody, and the other one is only with regard to federal assistance programs. It's not considered income. I think you're right.
Couldn't do that.
Yeah, I think I remember seeing somewhere that it was uh, taxed. Um, yeah, I'm trying to think about um, the, now the corporations.
Yeah, yeah, it's all part of the same sentence. Shall not be, shall not be taken into account as income and shall not be taken into account as resources for purposes of determining. That's all one sentence, so I think you're absolutely right, Lynn. I, I misread that.
Alright.
If there was a period after the word income, then I'd say no, but there isn't. It's one sentence.
Hmm. Okay. Great. Was there anything else for those? Okay, uh, so Malik, I think you have the next two sections, um.
Yep, I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Okay. There we go.
Yeah, my sections were not, they're a lot easier to understand. Oh. Can you guys see my PowerPoint? Yeah, so my two sections are basically uh, reviews of the policy to see how it's going. So the first one, section six of ninety-five-twelve, uh, it's like, just the Secretary of Energy has to prepare a report um, on the carbon fee in the, the previous bill, like, I'm sorry, in the previous section, and the emissions reduction schedule, to just see how effective and efficient uh, the carbon uh, fee and dividend is going on. And then they'll propose any changes to the rate and increases to optimize the effectiveness of the bill and uh, discuss if there's anything else that needs to be done to meet targets through twenty-five. So it's like, the Secretary of Energy is just analyzing the effectiveness of the carbon fee and just kind of redirecting the ship if it needs to, if they need to poke it along a little further. And they'd also do an analysis by the sector. So they see which sectors are increasing, decreasing, and remaining neutral. And then recommending any actions to federal departments to oversee those sectors to try to prod them along in the right direction. Also, uh, yeah, just look at overall any other factors impacting the effectiveness and make any recommendations based on other federal laws like the Clean Air Act to see if anything else needs to be done or changed. And then, yeah, it has to be available to the public sixty days before submission to Congress. Pretty much it for that section. Section seven, so this is uh, same Secretary of Energy uh, needs to create a report to understand how the carbon fee is impacting biomass as an energy source. And if, maybe if there's like a greater consumption of biom- And if, maybe if there's like a greater consumption of biomass biofuels, if that's like reducing our carbon sinks and reducing diversity, just understand that we're not going down the wrong path with this bill. So they have to work with the National Academy of Sciences and the EPA, and just see how the carbon fee is impacting those areas. And then if there's any recommendations to mitigate the increased emissions from the biomass as a result of the carbon. Pretty much it.
Alright, great. So, do you wanna, um, stop sharing your screen?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know much about the biomass use, what is that? This is like the first time I've heard that come up in talking about the bill, I, I don't know what that is at all, I don't think, maybe I do know what it is.
Yeah.
What does that have to do with things, I, that's?
I didn't look too much into it, but I, I might be making a few inferences here, but maybe if, I don't know, I don't want to misspeak.
So is, like, we'd be doing that instead of using fossil fuels, and that would be a problem, is that?
Yeah, like, maybe if there's like, I don't know if ethanol is considered, or like, maybe like algae-based fuels, if we shift towards those instead of like oil. But then maybe if they're used as a carbon sink and they're holding carbon, and then we burn the, the release of CO2 from that may not be accounted. So I think it's like, trying to count, like, if they try to shift from heavy CO2 fuel to something else, make sure that there's not like impacting biodiversity or like removing our carbon sinks in our natural environment.
Got it. Good.
Yeah, that, uh, I don't know. Oh, okay, so it was in the previous bill as well, um. That's interesting, I actually did not even know about this either, and I feel like it's not really talked about at all with CCL. That's very interesting, I'm gonna have to look into that a little bit more, and see if there's some good resources on our website about that, but. Um, great, yeah, there was just a few other, were there any other questions about those sections?
I think this is just leading all of us to, you know, look into it a little bit more in different areas, you know?
Yeah, I think so, um, you know, kind of leveling where, where we all stand on our knowledge and stuff like that. Yeah, there were just a few others, more sections about effective date and principal interpretation, no preemptive of state law, which is pretty much just saying that nothing in this act you know, goes above state law or regulation, or let's see, preempt or supersede or be interpreted to preempt or supersede any state law or regulation, so just, um, stuff like that, so, um. Yeah, great. Well, thank you all for participating, I didn't really have too much else other than that. I'm going to, let's see.